And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. Good evening, thank you all for coming. Erin is excused, Paul is somewhere, I think. On the agenda, moment of silence, please join me as we remember Richard Kingsbury, retired employee of the district, and John Pardi, also a retired employee of the district. Thank you. Presentations. School accountability changes. Who's Donna Marie? You're gonna do this off Elmo then, or?
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
So you want some lights down, I assume, so.
So, for those of you that don't know me or haven't met me yet, I'm Donna Marie. My official title is the Executive Director of Data Accountability in School. And my baby. I'm also in charge of Social Studies and Fine Arts. Okay. One combination. It really is. So, this morning, Annette, Dawn, Dan and I went to Bosse's presentation on the new rules of accountability. I also attended a training this summer that went for two days. It was gripping on the new rules of accountability, so I wanna go through this with you. I have added a few things on, based on the presentation this morning, to the board. So, should I resend that, Connie?
Yeah.
I've got updates.
Do you want to send it to me?
They're tiny, so I think they're. So, sorry. Hi, George.
Thanks, sweetheart.
So, ESSA stands for Every Student Succeeds Act, and this was actually adopted by the federal government after No Child Left Behind was sunsetted in 2015. New York State took a little bit of time to come up with their own plan, which was provisionally, and you'll see in the presentation that there is still a comment time and there might be changes. So, probably, if you're okay with that. So, these are the terms for the old school report cards. Effective AMO, priority schools, focus schools, AYP, AMO, CINNIE. You might have heard some of those terms. They're all gone. We have a whole new set. If you did not know the old terms, then you're probably in great shape because you're just learning these new ones. I kinda put this in because it's a brave new world, and I wanted to let you know that the public comment on the state plan actually closed on Friday, and that they wanted to get changes to the plan because they accepted comments from educators and from the public. There were a few things buzzing around this morning at Bosse's that they wanted to change, but I'll give you the gist of the plan. What's new? The following things are new. States have been allowed to set their own goals. There are broader measures than just test scores. Characteristics. There's a new focus on English language learners. It's a lot of weight in this new plan. There are new subgroups, which include those three areas listed, the homeless students, students in foster care, and students who are active military. Those three areas, homeless, foster, and military, will be reported on the school report card, but you won't be punished as a school district or a school. My thought is, there's gotta be a reason that they're starting to collect that information on those kids. And then, we learned this morning that there's a focus on supporting schools instead of punishing schools. In those categories, I think, they're helping.
Is Paul gonna say accountability?
No. I would be so disappointed if you weren't here.
I did have a question.
So, I stole this out of the ESSA plan. This is how does New York State identify schools for recognition and support? And these are the new categories. So, they used to be called reward schools. They're now called recognition schools. There's really no change. It's the top schools that have the highest results on test scores. They get labeled as recognition. I'd love to be there. Schools in good standing, I put down on the left, or on the right, that that's a default category, so most of our schools are schools in good standing. Those are schools that are not in any of the naughty categories. And then, the two categories that you need to worry about are this targeted support and improvement, they're calling them TSI, and then comprehensive support and improvement, and they're calling them CSI. A TSI school is when one of your subgroups, so any of your ethnic subgroups, your students in poverty, your economically disadvantaged students, or your students with disabilities. So, those subgroups didn't change. If you have one of those, which aren't doing well, then you could end up as a TSI school. CSI is when your all-student category isn't doing well. For a CSI school, those are going to be reviewed every three years, and what that makes me think is that if you end up on the CSI list, you're stuck there for three years no matter how you perform. So, that's there. It is really only the bottom 5% of schools in New York that are on the CSI. And what they're doing is they're sort of ranking all of the schools based on performance, and then pulling off that bottom 5%. That's a very different way of looking at accountability. We used to have these targets, and if you didn't hit the target, then you were on the accountability list. A thousand schools on that, or there could be five schools. In this, they're looking for the same number of schools to be identified. If you have a graduation rate less than 67%, it's pretty much an automatic that you're gonna be a comprehensive. We're. And then, the other way you can end up CSI is if you have a subgroup which continues over time to be in that category, and they will eventually label you as well. CSI, those are identified annually, and like I said, that's when you've got a subgroup Here's the interesting thing. It used to be on test scores and graduation rate. That was it. Now, it's on all of these things. We fell asleep this morning listening to the presentation ad nauseam about what all of these things include. They gave us examples in calculating numbers, and I was riveted. I must say that others were not as riveted, but that's okay. That's my job. So, student achievement, I learned this this morning, that actually counts twice. I asked the question and it was confirmed. The test scores are gonna count twice as much as pretty much anything else. They're still up there, but there are other things that are going to be included. They're gonna be looking at student growth, so how a student progresses over time compared to last year's test scores, this year's test scores. We view that as a process called SLOs, you know, where we're looking at student growth, so they're gonna be doing academic progress. And that's how are your schools doing compared to other schools in New York State. Our graduation rates are up there as well. Our ELL proficiency, and that's gonna be mostly on the NICE SLAT exam, which is a special test. Chronic absenteeism, that's a brand-new world. They started looking at it a couple of years ago. We had to report data, and now it's one of these seven areas they're taking into consideration. We'll talk a little bit about what makes a student chronically absent. And then, the last one is college career and civic readiness. They're using AP exams and IB programs and anything that's in that accelerated group. They have no definition yet for what civic readiness means. When that comes out, I'll tell you. So, some new things to know. So, I sort of categorize this as the good, the bad, and the ugly. Good things. Social studies exams count. Yay! They didn't use to. It was really just math, ELA, and then a little bit of science, but now the social studies. They don't count as much as math and ELA, but they do count. You get more points for higher-level diplomas. A lot of our kids get the advanced designation diploma, a lot of our kids, and you get more points for any of those higher-level diplomas. You get more points for passing AP exams. That caused a little bit of a flurry of activity around here in July because we were not keeping our AP exams. All those scores had to be entered, so we did get them all in, and they did get all reported up. Credit for every kid that was proficient on an AP exam. On a regent, you get more points for mastery. So, if a student scores an 85 or above, you get bonus points. So, all these things are very good for us because we have lots and lots of kids in these categories. Our accelerated students, especially at the junior high, now count where they didn't before. So, if a student didn't take the math eight because they were in Algebra I, that's gonna count for us, where before we would just be. And then, instead of just a four-year and a summer graduation rate, which was how it was in the old report card, now they're gonna be looking at a combination of four, five, and six-year graduation rates, and that is super-good news, especially for our students with disabilities who will graduate, but will just take a little bit of extra time to get there. That's all fantastic stuff. Bad. So, chronic absenteeism. Any student that is absent for pretty much 10% of the time that they are enrolled, they have to attend at least one day, that was new that I heard today, and then if they're absent for 10%. That's only 18 days' absence, and it doesn't matter if it's an excused absence or an unexcused absence. It's any. Educational field trip, I mean, there's a lot of stuff. Another thing, the first designations, they're going to use the 16, 17, and then the 17, 18 data. That's already passed, so we didn't get what counted until after it was too late to do anything about it, which, yeah, I'll rally against, but that's what they gave us. They will rank you against other schools. In my estimation, it's much more difficult to get into those recognition areas when you're, you know, going against Bronx School of Science in Scarsdale. The subgroups of 30, that's always been there, you needed a subgroup of 30 in order to count, but the way they're doing it has significantly changed, and it's not based on the number of kids you have in a subgroup. It's now based on the number of test results. So, if you have 10 kids in a subgroup and they take an English, a math, and a science exam, three times 10 is 30 scores, and they will count. So, even our tiniest little subgroups are gonna count, which they didn't lose to. I know. All right, Paul? See, I needed you here. And for us, this is the ugly. If you fail to meet the 95% participation rate in 17, 18, and then 18, 19, you're gonna be required to do a plan. It's probably gonna be a local plan, but you're gonna be required to show that you're doing something to increase. We have decreased our refusal rate, which means we've increased our testing rate by about 10%, but we still have a lot of work to do in. I refusal rates, and we're gonna end up on this list. I believe we're gonna end up on this list. We're gonna write plans, and we're gonna get those reviewed and write that. And then, how do you get out? So, let's say you're designated as a TSI or a CSI. You need two, same as the old way, you need two consecutive years of good data in order to get out. See? I did it in English, right? This morning, they couldn't do that? Okay. Questions on this? It's a lot of information, and it is a very different accountability system to look at. And when the school report cards come out and I come back and do my presentation, I'll remind you of some of these things. You won't have to remember them between now and then.
So, with the participation rate, were we ever at 95%?
We were always at 95%.
Were we always, before the whole opt-out move and started, we were up there?
Absolutely. And I'll take, you know, Mr. White actually drove to people's houses and picked up kids and brought them to school to make sure that we made our 95%. I mean, we were really dedicated to that.
I didn't know if that was something that was primarily affected by that full opt-out.
I think you've answered my question. First, thank you for using my favorite movie in the slide. It wasn't lost on me.
Little bit.
Yeah. Following up what Mike just asked, so, as far as you know right now, you're on, you get on the list, you just start writing a plan?
Yes.
You don't know if, do you have to show improvement?
Yes.
Or you only get off if you hit the 95?
No, I believe you have to show improvement. So, they have these, they're called MIPS, Measure of Interim Progress. Yay! And what they do, they want you here, they will set benchmark targets for you to get to the place that they want you. 95% is your participation rate. And you're at 90, then they will break it down. Each year, you need to increase by 1%. If you're farther down, each year, you'll have to increase more. Five years to get up to what they're looking for. You'll hear MIPS.
I don't have any questions, and I just have comments. It'll be interesting to see after this year.
Oh, shoot the messenger.
Depending on what happens legislatively with. That was tied into the opt-out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and I think, you know.
Be interesting to see where that goes and if that impacts this.
Decreased our refusal rate by, I think, almost 10% this year, and I believe that it was because the kids wanted to try it, so they wanted. Don't know, you know, how that's gonna carry through over the years, but I believe that's why we have that. And we have, you know, the eighth grade really suffers because those accelerated kids are not in the mix, and now that they're in, and that's a regent, which they're not going to refuse, that should increase our, you know, right off the bat at the junior high.
With the electronic exams, did we notice a change in how long it takes students to take them? The length of time it takes them to take an exam?
Well, the exam itself is very different than it was last year.
It's not timed.
So, it's not timed anymore, and there are less questions on it. So, the construct of the exam changed, plus the way that the kid took the exam changed.
So, it's all new?
It's all new, yeah. Yeah, so, try to be me doing comparative data year to year with completely different.
Yeah, you can't.
There were some glitches, too. I mean, ELA went down in the second day statewide.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah.
I remember. Yeah.
So, hi. So, great presentation, as always. I enjoy it.
Gotta be upbeat about this.
Yes, you do. So, a lot of changes, a lot of new things. What happens to our schools that were already identified, like Rock's?
Well, that plan. If they don't meet the criteria here to be labeled, they'll come off of their LEP plan. If they continue to meet criteria that's labeled here, and now there's more things involved in it. You have an ENL population that does very well, Rock's, they may be able to.
I'm not sure, Mary. In the past, it's almost started new, when there was, went to focus, priority, that changed, and they went to new terminology. We did have a school that was on a JET plan. They changed things, and it started new. So, we're not sure. They don't always tell us, but one of the things we did learn today is, they have been looking at the lowest 5% of schools in New York as far as how they're performing. They've up that, looking at the lowest 10%. So, there's gonna be more schools that are gonna be identified in some way, shape, or form, and they've increased the number of subgroups.
They're making a big deal about, they want to find the lower-performing schools to support them, and probably better instead of punishing them for. That's a great change.
With the homeless and the foster kids being often.
And military.
And the military kids, often that being in the chronic absenteeism, for, is there, what type of support do we know is that gonna look like? Is that gonna be counselors or something along those lines, find out what the?
Are you asking if those three groups are chronically absent?
Sometimes they come hand-in-hand, if you.
Sometimes they do, but many times they don't. So, our military kids really, I have not seen chronically absent.
Probably not the military, but more the foster kids or the homeless kids. I could see that.
I'm the homeless liaison for the district.
Okay.
Really into the weeds when it comes to the homeless data. So, they do have a higher incident. We have a lot of kids that are in homeless situations, busing them from law. And they do, you know, the counselors get notified when a student is.
If you're asking, though, whether funding's going to help in terms of support, we don't know that yet.
Right. What does support mean? Yes.
I guess no, but that's.
Thank you. One more thing, Donna. I know our percentage of ELL every year, I mean, how many of now? Is there a percentage?
26. We just did the numbers, and we've just.
Recently received part of the NICE SLAT scores back. We'll get the other half September 1st. In the budget, we did add 1.0 ENL teacher, which I just hired. She's wonderful. So, in about four years, we've added three ENL positions because the state changed the requirement for servicing them. And even when they test at the highest level of commanding right now, the state says you still have to provide two years of consult support after they reach the highest, so you still have to give them minutes towards support with a teacher, even when they've tested, basically kind of tested out.
Yeah, they would not be, if they're in commanding, they wouldn't be. That's great that they're continuing to get support for the.
So, I just wanna thank Donna Marie for your presentation, because this is a far cry from the way the four of us started our day this morning. You may have been riveted. The rest of us, I think I can join the two of you in with me. We felt like somebody was speaking a foreign language because it was so technical, and you've simplified this so that we can understand the basics of what this new accountability looks like, so, thank you, and we're glad that you're riveted because we're gonna need somebody that can handle all those formulas when the results come in.
Thanks, Donna. Comments from the audience? There are none. Move to item four. Board committee reports and comments. Mary?
Put together the dates for the policy committee meetings for the year, and the first one is September 17th, is that right, Connie?
Anything legislative, Paul?
There is nothing, but apparently.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got a tough act to follow, Paul. You gotta step it up.
Not even gonna try.
Anything else? Any other board comments, reports?
Well, I'm very pleased for the last time to give an update on the $20 million penalty, just in case anybody out there hasn't seen the news this past weekend. We are beyond thrilled. The governor signed the bill. I was notified through a text from Assemblyman Sterpy around 7:00 PM on Friday, and then things fell into place publicity-wise. I wanna thank our President Schuster for stepping up and doing a media interview Friday night, and I did some media interaction Saturday morning and again this morning via radio. Also spoke with the legislators who were instrumental in helping this to pass. I really wanna stress that this was a community effort, and people really put their individual opinions and political affiliation aside, and everybody really joined together for the benefit of our district and our students. So, we're working on a letter that's gonna go out to the community, thanking people and having that message in it as well. So, $20 million does not come without strings attached. I'm also pleased to inform you that I received a call from the governor's office this morning, and Wednesday is the start of the New York State Fair. I believe it's known as Governor's Day, and I believe the governor is doing the ribbon-cutting at the new Expo Center, and our CNS marching band has been requested to be there Wednesday morning to perform at this event. So, it's a huge highlight for us in a way to give back and say thank you to the governor and to the community. So, we look forward to that, and if any of you are interested in joining Donna and I and some cabinet members there Wednesday morning, let us know. I guess when the governor calls and requests, we pull it together. So, yes, I was also told, you know, our marching band isn't in the position that it's in for no reason. This is their band camp week, and they've been practicing, I think, Donna, didn't they say like from noon to nine at night every day? The governor's office was gracious enough to say that the kids could stay and enjoy the fair for the day. They would not have to pay admission, but the marching band director made it very clear that they needed to go back to practice to get ready for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. So, we are pulling it together, and we're pleased that our kids have this opportunity. It's a great opportunity.
Can I just say one more thing? Besides, we're all very relieved and happy that the governor signed the bill, and besides thanking the community, the taxpayers for, you know, getting their message out and the word out, besides thanking our local politicians, I would like to thank you, Annette, for all your hard work to get this through.
Thank you, and I could not have done it without Donna, so, thank you. And I think Donna and I might sleep a little better.
Yeah.
So, thank you, everybody.
Routine action items. 5A. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of August 6th. B. Consideration of classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C. Consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Education, and consideration of contract award asphalt paving to Davis Wallbridge, the amount of $73,900. I will entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, C, and D as a group. Danlin? Mr. Harrington?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, question.
Yeah, just a, for Donna. Is it just, is it typical that? That happens often. Or I was just surprised.
Well, you know what? It's kind of typical this time of year, late in the season, where people are booked up and doing things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's probably why.
We were actually, we had other things we got no bids on, and so we'll have to go back out a month from now, kind of let things settle down. But we weren't, I will tell you this, we, the awarded price was not that far away from what we expected it should cost. I mean, sometimes this time of year, the worst case is you get really, really high bids, and they're the only people that bid, so, in the case of things we didn't get bids for, we're happy to come back in a month and do them again, so we don't pay an exorbitant price for the work. The paving's gonna get done immediately, as fast as we possibly can get it done. Hopefully, you know, before school starts.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so we've got the motion, we've got the second. Any other questions? All in favor. Discussion action. Fix A. Resolution to transfer unanticipated revenues to the capital fund. I don't know if it netted, or Donna wanna comment on it?
So, this is an interesting situation we find ourselves in. You know, for many years, we're often shorted in state aid that we get from New York State, and we're, we spend a lot of time trying to reconcile it and understand it. This year, we, throughout the year, had done a number of things, obviously, with great concern for having to potentially pay this penalty. We have been looking for money at every possible place, and one of, a number of years ago, we sent our stack process. That's the process of applying for aid for the servicing of our special ed population. And we sent that to Bosse's. And Bosse's has not only been completing that process and doing an excellent job of it, but auditing the open years. And we found that in this 17, 18 school year, we were able to collect some revenue from open years that contributed to this favorable variance that we're talking to you about. In addition, we actually engaged a group called School Aid Specialists, and they came in and audited a number of areas and found some additional opportunities to collect some additional aid, and that helped us. You may be aware that you've seen our Bosse's bills increase over the last several years as we continue to work with Bosse's, again, special ed being a big component. And what happens with the Bosse's is when they don't spend all the money, they don't have a fund balance. They can't keep the money, so they have to refund the money back to the schools. And this year, we got a higher-than-expected Bosse's refund. And then, finally, we had odd timing, but we received a $1.7 million foundation aid payment that related to 16, 17, but it's gotta be included in the 17, 18 school year because we already closed the books for 16, 17. So, at the end of the day, we ended up with about $5.3 million of unexpected revenue. So, the first question is, well, great, why don't we just let that go into fund balance? Well, our fund balance will be at the 4% targeted level, and by the way, that's assuming we make the $1.8 million payment, which we're not gonna be making now, so we're kind of reacting to that, but we can't really put it in fund balance because we'll be over that. But we can't really put it in fund balance because we'll be over that. So, the best way to protect the taxpayers' interests and the district's interests is to put this money in the capital fund. And we were fortunate, you know, we're very fortunate to have Mike as our board president and fiscal advisors as our advisors. And working with Grossman-Stana Moore collectively, those people came up with this idea that putting it in the capital fund would be a good idea. Because by transferring the money to the capital fund, the district can then, for the various capital projects we have underway, we can borrow less money. Think of it like paying your mortgage down a little sooner than you expected. And what that'll do is that'll free up money that'll either be able to use to have a lower tax levy in the future or have more money available to fund student programs. So, it's kind of a nice situation to be in. And it's, it's just amazing that we find ourselves with the penalty forgiven and additional revenues all hitting us at one time. So, it's, I don't want to portray this as a rags-to-riches story because we're not on the riches end of it. But we're definitely in better financial shape as a result of these two events than we expected we'd be in. So, the recommendation is that this transfer be made to the capital fund, thereby lowering future debt service and making these funds available to reduce the tax levy so that we, or fund future instructional programs.
Any questions?
So, if we put it in the capital fund, that money can be used for programs?
No, what'll happen is, remember, it's the notion of, it's kind of like if you pay your mortgage down early, then the money you would have used to pay your mortgage down, you can use for other things. And that's kind of the concept here. So, it has to go to pay down our...
Project.
To avoid future borrowing. So, if we do the Bear Road project, for example, and instead of borrowing, you know, 18, 20 million dollars for Bear Road, we borrow, you know, 15 million, well, then we won't have the debt service associated with 20, we'll only have the debt service associated with 15. And that'll free up additional money. And at each budget cycle, as we go through it, we can make decisions of whether should we have a lower tax levy. Now, remember, that debt service does impact the tax levy calculation, so it'll manifest itself that way. Or should we look at using that additional funds to fund programs? So, we'll have some latitude in how that money is used, but it must be used in the capital fund. And the only thing the capital fund does is borrow money and pay down, you know, pay down debt.
Pay for the project, yeah.
Yeah, because what, what in essence would happen in the closing of any given year, money that is available, excess revenues or favorable variances from expenses would naturally flow to the fund balance. But since our fund balance is already at 4%, the board has the option then to move this money somewhere else. And the place that's within your power is to move to the capital fund. There are other places we could move. For example, we can set up a capital reserve, but that would take voter approval. We have to go out to the voters and get approval and, you know, so this is the most logical place to put the money with such short notice.
What would that put our capital fund at?
You know, the, the exact balance of the capital fund, I don't have off the top of my head. But the bottom line, it's going to put it at a, it's going to make funds available so that we, $5.3 million more funds available so that we don't have to borrow that much money, $5.3 million, in our, in one of our upcoming capital projects. Remember, we have a roof project that's underway and we have the Bear Road project that's underway. And the Bear Road project includes the Fuel Island. So, we got a, we got a fair amount of capital spending that's taking place.
Are there limits to our capital fund, like there are fund balance?
Only to the extent that you have projects, you know, you know, we have to have, you know, capital projects.
You have to have a project in progress to use the money.
Yes. Can't go over the voter authorization.
Exactly.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion to transfer the unanticipated revenue to the capital fund. Have we got a motion? Mr. Donafio? Ms. Scanlon? All in favor? Resolution to establish the tax rate. Comes up on my screen. There it goes. Okay, Mr. Keegan?
Well, once again, we, this is kind of a good news story. As you know, we told the taxpayers when they did, when we had the budget vote in May, that their tax increase was going to be about 2.94%. But a couple of things, you know, always happen every year is we're working with the prior year's assessments. So, assessed property values in the three towns went up over $40 million. And so, because those assessments went up, the, the tax rate went down. So, you know, the, the tax rate increase in the town of Cicero, instead of being 2.94, it's going to be 0.64. Roughly the same amount in the town of Salina. The town of Clay went up a little. Theirs is about, instead of 2.94, it's going to be 2.54. You might say, wow, why, why is that the case? Well, that's because the equalization rate in the town of Clay decreased slightly. Now, just think about that, if you think about equalization rates. In the ideal world, for a full value assessed town, and they're not a full value assessed town, but in the ideal world for a full value assessed town, you'd have an equalization rate of 1. That means that the Board of Equalization agrees with the assessments, that your assessments roughly represent fair value. Clay's a little more complicated because they don't have a full value assessment. But to the extent that their equalization went down, rate went down, they're that much further away from full value. And therefore, the Board of Equalization is saying, hey, we need to true these up a little bit more. And so, there's a little higher, as a result of that. They're, they're not benefiting as much from the increased assessment, if that makes any sense. And they're not, they're not higher than we told them. We told them 2.94 and they're coming in at 2.54. So, they still should be pleased. They're just not benefiting from the change of assessments as much as Cicero and Salina. Hope that didn't confuse you.
You need to make some good press about this.
Sure. And it was, Mary, I think it was your suggestion that we included a slide in this year's budget presentation. This is that same concept manifesting itself yet again.
And the growth at 1.8 was greater than the estimate of 1.0 that we got initially.
That's right. That's right.
But to be down at 0.64 and 0.62% compared to 2.94 that we went out with, very good news. For at least, yeah. Well, I live in Clay, but we'll talk later. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, anything else? Any more questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to establish the tax rates as presented. Harry? Paul? Will call?
Michael Schuster.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Michael Donafio.
Aye.
Terry Kruger.
Aye.
Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
And Mark Thorne.
Aye, sir. Authorization for the warrants. Donna?
Well, as you know, the warrants are the, the warrants are what we send to the towns. The towns can actually collect the taxes that we've, that we've, that make up our total tax levy. And so, the board each year approves the warrants at the rates or at the amounts as per the, per the allocation of the levy to the towns based on the new assessments. And so, that's all we're asking you to do.
D, is it tax collection deposit agreement? Donna?
So, we, we have an agreement where the towns, because we're a Class A town, they're responsible for tax bills. And the receiver of taxes in each of the three towns collects taxes on our behalf. And that's what that agreement basically is, is that we're in agreement. We have an agreement with them that they're going to collect and deposit those taxes. They'll keep any interest associated with any earnings on it, which, by the way, is very much. And then we get, they remit payments to us each month and the county tops us off at the end of the tax collection cycle. So, we'll get paid to us the amount of those taxes authorized by you through the warrants.
How about the penalty? Does that come to us or stay with the town?
Penalties...
I mean, there is a penalty period in October where people can still pay their taxes to the... What I was used to in the old days, the town used to keep the penalties.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, because they, they make us whole and they keep the, we're going to get our taxes, but they're going to keep any penalties.
So, the penalty will stay with the town as part of their, part of their fee for collection?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Tax levy's the tax levy.
Tax levy's the tax levy, yeah. Well, if we were collecting taxes on our own...
We'd keep the penalty.
Without a town, we'd keep the penalty.
Like, a lot of small towns here have, they have a tax collector. They hire, a seasonal person comes in and actually collects the taxes and...
Central Square, we did that, yeah.
They manage the whole process and they keep penalties and...
Kept everything, yeah. But once you have somebody else doing it, you have to pay for the service.
We are happy to not be doing it.
Yes, yes, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
This is a big job. I think the towns would gladly hand it back over to us if they could.
Yeah, I think they give it to you tomorrow. So, a motion then to approve the authorization of the, pardon me. Yes, the authorization of the warrant, C, and tax collection deposit agreement, D. Anybody? Kruger? Ms. Scanlon? All in favor? E. Reauthorization of the agreement, the State of New York for the shared transportation services. Or trans, yeah, transportation, you know what it says. Okay. State of New York Transportation for Shared Services. Donna?
You know, this is an annual thing that we, that we have you folks approve. And it's, it's simply relating to the salt that we store. And we, they store it for us and we give them some salt in exchange and that's pretty much the deal.
Two plus some non-marketable equipment? Comes up? Well, maybe not. There it is. Yeah, that was the one, yeah, teacher's desk, okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion then for 6E and 6F. Mr. Falia? Mr. Harrington? All in favor? Retirements. Tammy Hummiston, a bus driver, retiring with 19 years of service. We wish her many happy years ahead. Personnel, 7A instructional. 7B support staff. Any questions on 7A or 7B? I'll entertain a motion to approve those together. Mr. Donafio? Mr. Marizio? All in favor? Motion for executive session. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association to review two legal matters relative to potential litigation and to review the employment history of two individuals with no action to follow. Motion. Mr. Kruger? Mr. Marizio? All in favor? Executive session, looks like 746.